Good evening, welcome to the April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First order of business is roll call, starting with Mr. Knapp.
Happy yellow eye.
Jesse present.
Cisco present. Also with us, Town Planner. Item review and approval of the minutes from April second, two thousand and twenty-four. Any changes, corrections? Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Oh. Happy eye.
Happy yellow eye.
Tessie, your eye.
Cisco. Next item is staff updates with the town planner.
It's a couple of things, more for the audience than the board. We adopt our subdivision regulations and our rules of procedure were updated at our last meeting on April second, and those are available online. If anybody in the audience is interested in looking at those, the links are on the agenda that will take you right to it. Just another plug for the NH training for the planning and zoning conference. Like I mentioned before, take it at your own pace if you're not available on May eleventh. Because I know it's a Saturday, and they will post it back on their website. And I think that's it, because I had something else, but everybody signed the regulation paper. So I don't have anything else unless there's any questions or comments for me.
Thank you. Next item is adopting the technical review group rules and regulations. I will open it to public comment. Public comment, hearing none. Close, anybody online?
I don't see anybody for or against or questions for this.
Public comment, any comment by the board?
Two corrections, one is a typo, that this is the director of the highway department, I should probably say the director of the highway department. And I had a question on why fifteen plan sets when I started counting everybody up. Ran out of fingers, luckily had enough toes, but still came up short with enough plan sets.
Um.
Okay.
Thank you, the board member bringing this up. I had taken it from our subdivision regulations, Andy has crack, we should probably include additional plan sets for each of the department heads. As well as town engineer paper copies. So that's one, two, three.
Could it just say for each of the members?
Um, so also, it's also for the board members too, so it also, our board members might fluctuate as well. Because we're going to have another alternate, I anticipate. I think if we do. Right now, we do fifteen, that's just for staff for the file, extra copies in for the board. I think twenty plan sets would probably work. But only require two of the full size, because the full size is really for staff, like myself to review and for if anybody comes in to review. And eleven by seventeen, so eighteen plan sets. And if that's not enough, we can always fluctuate that too. So that's all, I think that's it.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept the technical review group rules and regulations.
With the minutes?
Yeah, with the, yeah.
Second by Ron. Knapp, I will call.
Happy yellow eye.
Tessie, your eye.
Next item is discussion with the board for preliminary conceptual site plan. Would you like to come forward, please? This is for two, three, four, seven, four, dash, two, C, dash, two, two, dash, SR.
And if you wouldn't mind turning on the microphone, there's a little button, make sure it turns green. And, yeah, and it sometimes doesn't like to pick up, so if you kind of.
All right, is that, is that working?
Yeah, well, I'm going with it.
Okay, I can't, I can't tell if you're.
I know, when you listen to it later, sometimes you can't hear as well. And just to address the board, the applicant asked me to put the plans up for you, so just give me a second, I'm going to put it up on the.
Okay.
I know everybody has a copy of it in their packets, but I'll put it on the big screen as well.
While Vanessa's doing that, on the new map, there is a correction needed? Village district and the town center district had changed.
Oh, because that has been updated, yes.
So it's over by the little pond on the right, the border now.
Yep.
I don't know if that's going to impact the units themselves at all. No longer have to or required to have commercials.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll just go through the existing ones, so in, you know, in case any board members don't recall what we had, had originally approved. So you can see it was six units. Now, what we had done in this case, because there was the presumption that there could certainly be homeowners, which are the residential occupants of the buildings, renting out their commercial space to a third party or a second party, I guess would be user. So that's why we had the kind of twin, one up the hill, one down the hill. Drive aisles, which included, you know, most of, if not all, actually it is all, the residential accesses and entrances to the homes on what would have been the north side or northeast side. And then the commercial entrances and parking down below that on the south southwest. Now, I think what has transpired in with the Tibodos working through this is that they're realizing that, you know, it's probably not how this is going to get utilized, and that commercial space is almost definitely, if not definitely, more than likely going to be utilized by the actual homeowner. So it's going to be, you know, homeowner occupant use. So with that, we tried to look at, well, okay, then do we need all these different accesses to different sides of the building, et cetera, et cetera? And Vanessa, we can switch to the next one. And then, oh, and I apologize, I'm Christian Smith of Beals Associates, I know Vanessa introduced me, but Lynn Tibodo was also here with me at the table. So what we tried to do is see what we could do based on that to eliminate as much impervious parking area and drive aisle area as we possibly could, provide for a bit of a better arrangement for the buildings and better separation. Because now we don't have a central drive aisle, access aisle that goes in between the two middle ones. Nothing changes until you get to, you know, about where the end of that curve is on the road in. The system would stay the same, the wetland crossing would stay the same, all of that would be identical. The septic fields would not be relocated, we'd have to do a little jogging of the, the septic tanks and the chambers. But, you know, we just felt that this is a much better layout. We will either maintain or slightly reduce the approved buffer impact of the previous iteration. As I say, certainly largely reduce the impervious area out there, which is also likely going to eliminate one or two of the little infiltration ponds that used to be out in the back. Because everything now could be just brought forward and or into the, the stone drip edge areas in between the buildings, which we have actually a lot more room to, to provide those as well. So anyway, we just wanted to come in and, you know, chat with the board and see if you guys agree with us that this is a, a, you know, improvement actually on the other plan, now that they kind of have a good handle on, on how they feel those commercial spaces are going to be utilized. We did run the, the fire truck, and it can get in and out of here just as well as it did on the previous iteration. But again, you don't have the, the two lateral parking aisles and drive aisles, one north, one south of the buildings, and you don't have that extension aisle in between the two.
And basically, too, I just felt like the, the plan, if you have the original plans or whatever, what was going to be facing Route nine was kind of ugly, I thought. So by turning it around, you've got a building that looks more like a residence. You've got a front porch in the front, you've got a garage under, you still have that commercial component there. It's just a lot more attractive. So we're not proposing changing the footprint, the square footage or anything at all. We're just kind of flipping it around, making it more user friendly and a lot more attractive from Route nine. And this way, too, with the parking just in the front and not in the back, not only do you eliminate a lot of what they said, the impervious surface, but now people have got a yard in the back. It's much more usable than having a parking lot on each side of the residence. So we just think it looks a lot better, it's going to be a lot more attractive. And like I said, you know, Chris is, you know, in charge of, you know, what, how it's going to impact everything else. But as far as just making it a more attractive part of the town, I think that just makes sense. So I took my husband's plan and flipped it. And he said, this looks so much better.
So I have a question, so will the, the residential be in the front then, on the cemetery side? And if there's a commercial, they'll be in the back?
No, you're still going to have, you're still going to have that residential in the front, I mean, and I'm sorry, I have a really bad sketch here. You're still going to have that residential in the front, you're going to have that front porch. The, there will be, where the commercial was in the back is still going to be there in the front. It'll just be like under that porch. So that porch area will form the overhang for the commercial area and a garage under. So you'll still have that, so all the, the parking and stuff will still be, any, anyone commercial will be able to do that. And we are assuming that most of the residents here will be either the owners or someone who has a home business, whether it's a masseuse or an accountant, a real estate agent, or something like that that's working out of their home. So there'll be plenty of parking in front and for the residents as well as just making it more attractive for people that are going to be using this as their home.
And as a result, it turns out to be more environmental.
Which is always a good thing.
On the bottom.
There will be a garage under. Okay, in the original plan, there was just for the commercial, one entrance door. And two windows, there'll still be one entrance door and two windows and a garage under.
And when you enter the unit, you'll be a set of stairs going up to the second floor and third floor?
On the outside going up.
On the outside.
So it will be one flight of stairs going up to the front porch. There'll be also internal stairs from the garage going into the unit.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Just having a hard time visualizing it.
Apparently, the garage is.
That just answered a lot.
Thank you.
There's going to be a flight of stairs outside going up to an entrance.
Just to the front porch.
Just to the front porch.
Do you want me to show you this? It's a bad drawing, but it might be a little bit.
Because I'm, I'm trying to look at the old set and then figure out.
Here's the old step, right? This is what the back was going to look like, or what was going to be facing Route nine. You have this door that went into a little vestibule and then the commercial space, and then this was the back of the house. What we're going to do is turn it around, so you have, this is the front. You're going to have a garage under. This porch will be out overhanging the commercial space underneath, so you're still going to have that door and the two windows and the commercial space here, but a garage under, which maybe back a little bit. And then you'll have some exterior stairs going up to the front door here. From the garage, you'll have interior stairs going into. So it just looks a lot better.
Sorry, into.
That one. Into this level.
To the second floor.
The residential, first floor of the residential.
The garage is moving down this level.
Yeah, the garage is going to go underneath.
So the garage is going to be down a level.
It's going to go down a level, so it's going to be level with the commercial space. And then this, this space above that was a garage, is going to turn into a first floor master suite. Which I think is going to be.
So does, but you said it didn't add square footage?
We're not adding the square, we're not adding square footage, we're going to utilize the same square footage. But we can do this, so it makes more sense to you.
Just, just out of curiosity, if the garage moves down next to it, does it not add square footage?
This is what we're going to do, we're not going to add bedrooms. So that, do you mind having a microphone?
This one's on right here.
And obviously, I thought about that. I think that, I'm not ready to present this. I'm doing this, okay? I will show everybody here, and I'm trying to get this set up so it makes sense to you guys. All right, so this was the first floor plan. So the first floor plan initially had the kitchen, living room, and you came in off the front porch. And then this was the garage. So we're going to be putting the garage under, we're going to use this space that was the garage for a master bedroom, suite, okay? So again, that's pulled back there. Now, the second floor, I forgot this here, had two bedrooms. So what we're going to do is we're going to take that square footage that we're using in the garage to make the master bedroom, and we're going to create an attic up here. So we're going to have one bedroom and a bath and laundry, and the rest of this is going to be attic space, so it'll be unfinished, so we're going to. Um, you know what, they are two bedroom units, and I think that's the way they're going to stay. It'll be storage for sure, because we're using that space on the first floor as commercial. So this will add storage, people, I mean, you know, people do what they want to do, but that's not the plan. The plan is to keep the finished square footage the same and the footprint the same. But just make it a little bit more livable and a lot more attractive.
And the walkout to the backyard will be on that level.
The walkout to the backyard will be on that level, right, and they'll have a yard. It won't be a parking space here and a parking space there, okay? I mean, you get this, I know, you're, you're building, you get all this, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure, like, so the second floor, or this still remains an upstairs?
That still remains an upstairs.
This becomes the office space?
Yeah, which was the office space underneath. It's just, you're going to flip it and move the stairs so you have access, but the thing is, the footprint isn't changing at all.
So where were the stairs from the garage?
I mean, I sleep in my living room a lot.
Yes, and they were here, they were here in this plan, and they're here on this level. We're just going to move it because the garage is here, we're just going to move the stairs on this side, so this will be the commercial. And obviously, we'll have the stairs coming in here. But it's still going to be there.
And then come up here, and it'll come into the upstairs.
It'll come into the upstairs, right, just like they did on, on the original plan. Yep, so like I said, basically, square footage is not moving, is not changing at all. We're just going to make it a little bit more attractive, and we're getting rid of a lot of parking spaces and roads.
So Christian, the plan is to submit a revised site plan?
Provided we get positive input from you folks tonight, that's.
People are generally positive to lessen the impact on the buffer.
So, yes.
Less impervious.
In the original one on the first floor, the living, first floor living space, there, there was a garage.
Right.
Okay, no, we are moving the garage underneath.
It's too much.
No, that's hot.
So. Yes, the garage will go, the garage will go here, or on this side.
Yep.
I'm trying to, upside down, I'm trying to figure it out here for you, Andy. The garage will go there.
Yep.
You'll, but you'll still have two things and a door, because this was just a little vestibule
Yep.
into the commercial space. So you're going to have that garage there, it may be pushed back a little bit. Like I said, it's, you know, but we're not, we're just going to use that square footage to make a first floor master.
I was just trying to figure out how it all lined up.
I know, I don't know, what did I do with my?
Would you happen to have a copy that we can have for the file? Or can I make a copy of your, submit it to the board?
Do you want a copy of this, do you, Vanessa?
Yep, yep.
I can send it to you.
If you've shown, if you've shown something to the board tonight,
Yeah.
it should go in a public record that we received a copy of that for the file tonight. So I can run and make a copy after, after the meeting is over. That's totally fine. Just in case there's someone not here at public meetings tonight and just want to look at it.
I do.
You did.
Okay, anyone have more questions, Ron?
I have a concern, I mean, I basically.
Microphone on, microphone's on.
Thank you, Vanessa. You know, village district residential, eighty thousand square feet, this got, non-residential mixed use got thirty thousand square feet allowed. And now we're just looking at it like in, nodding a wink, maybe it's quasi-mixed?
So when they applied, they were under the old zoning, so they're vested as town center. Because they were like right on the line, and when, with the zoning change in two thousand and twenty-two, that put them over in the village. However, at that, at that time, I did reach out to Mr. Tibodo to ask if he still wanted to pursue under the town center guidelines, he said yes. Now, if you need further clarification from the lawyer, I can ask, since it's amending the site plan, I anticipate that it would be vested, but I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to make that comment. But, so now it is village, but they're not changing.
Yeah, but it's mixed use before, and now, kind of, we can nod, it's mixed use. Home office downstairs, it's really not a mixed use, home office is not a mixed use.
Right.
It's a commercial space.
It is still a commercial space.
A home office is, if I work out of my home, it's not a commercial space.
Right.
This could still be rented.
That's, that's right, that, that.
It's just the, an option. I'm sorry, Chris.
No, I, I was just going to say that it, it's still an alternative. But it seems that the lion's share of folks who would be interested in this may operate a personal business out of, out of that space.
Right, because they want.
As opposed to lease it or rent it or something like that.
The residence and then have a commercial space underneath. I mean, what.
It would be a home occupation or a home business.
Right. It's not mixed use, that's not mixed use. So that's.
It's still a business there, whether I own it or I rent that upstairs or whatever, it's still a business down there, so it's not.
Call it two different things, and we go by these.
So you're suggesting they should file an amended one under the new zoning? And therefore, they could have residential with the option of having a home.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to build what they have right now under the new zoning.
Right.
We are approved under.
Because it's a six.
Town center.
So how, what is, what's happening to the size of the commercial space?
Nothing.
Nothing, it's still going to be.
It's the same exact size.
Exactly the same. It's exactly, we're not changing the footprint at all.
On that floor is a single, single car garage, and then the, the, the four hundred and eighty square feet of commercial.
Space, the entire downstairs was built out with a divided wall, I believe.
Right, and half of that divided wall went to the residential as their basement. But the, we've lost, you know, a little bit of frontage for the garage, and it was just a vestibule, so it's short. So we're going to add that square footage to continue and still have the four hundred feet for commercial space underneath. There's, we're just moving walls, we're not changing square footage or changing the usage of anything or the footprint. We're just making it more attractive from the road, we're getting rid of some impervious art surface. We're making it more attractive for people to live there and have a backyard. It's still commercial space on the bottom, people have the option to rent it out to someone outside, we're not changing that. But we're also in our HOA documents letting people, you know, if you, if you're a masseuse, if you're an accountant, and you want to rent that space out and have people come in and use that as a commercial space and advertise, it's still a commercial space.
You were here for the sand, didn't we have, it's going to be a separate space leased separately, it couldn't be part of the residential space?
It was not connected.
Mixed use, we, we, I think specifically said, it's got to be rented separately, it's got to be separate space.
Right, then, they were, they were disjointed, disconnected.
Not one rental included the other space.
There was some discussion that the commercial would be condominiumized.
Right.
And you folks may have control that. I think there was some discussion about that.
It would have to be in the documents.
The HOA documents to you, they've been approved, so.
I don't know if we do have HOA documents, I think it, the.
Yeah, you do, and they were approved.
Yeah, by, by town council.
By town council.
Those are part of like the in the nose of decision. That we require it, so the town attorney looks it over as from the town's interest, I guess is the best way to say it.
I think we had, we had the discussion that, you know, it wasn't going to be one lease for both spaces. You know, it's not going to be part of the, the residential, they have access to, and they can rent it out themselves. That was not going to be the case.
But if they're still using the same HOA documents that they had, is that, that's what you're doing, that already approved?
Oh, by the attorney, but our, our decision's separate from that, we have the right to do it at that point. We made it very clear that this, this is not going to be all residential space, that could sublet. It had to be two separate leases, one for the commercial space, not to meet the mixed, the mixed development.
Technically, you're going to have two meters because it's a separate metered space, it's, you're going to have heating systems that are applicable for each unit. Right.
Yeah, so that was on.
And I don't, so this is where, like, we've started making it a point to say, we would like to see the HOA documents, because otherwise what happens is, we don't get the HOA document, it gets approved with whatever language that's there, and the town attorney may or may not do it in a way that we, we as the board deem appropriate for what this is. And I don't have, looking through every, my past file, I don't have anything that shows me an HOA document, so, I, I mean, maybe I got it, but I, I got, the fact that I got the whole file here from the last approval is. I, I'm, I don't know.
And while I understand what Mr. Allen's saying, I don't think that there was any preclusion from somebody owning the residential unit and utilizing the downstairs commercial as well. And as, as Lynn mentioned, I mean, that's still going to be a completely separate compartmentalized commercial area. There's not, you're not going to be able to walk in there from the garage, you're going to have to walk in through that front door that she depicted. The garage is going to have stairs up to the residential, there's going to be the stairs on the exterior to the porch and the front door on the residential side, but that is still going to be a completely separate deal.
So for the commercial, you have to go outside and up the stairs. Right, you cannot get into the house from the commercial space, no.
But my recollection is what's included, it was going to be two separate leases, the residential could not include the, the commercial space. Had to be a separate lease, had to be separate, in order to meet the mixed, the mixed use definition. So my recollection, and we can go back and check the record, but my recollection.
Yeah, well, absolutely, we'll, we'll check the record, we'll, we'll check the approved condo docs and make sure.
So you're saying that someone cannot buy one of these units and want to, to own that office space, all right? So they want to own the office space, they're going to rent the office space, they can't own the unit above?
What, what he, what he's saying is you'd have to market them separately, and the individual would have to buy them separately. And then if they chose to use it for their accounting business, they could, but if they wanted to rent it out to somebody else, they could.
I didn't understand that they were going to be sold separately, it's one unit. Somebody wants to own it and rent it out as a commercial space to someone else, that was my understanding of the approval that we got.
If it's one unit, it's not mixed use.
If it's a separate commercial space on different utilities and stuff.
If I'm renting, if I'm buying, if I'm renting or buying commercial property, I get commercial space with, but it's one purchase, and it's not commercial, it's not a lot of commercial space, it's residential with.
But if you buy both and rent, but if you buy both and rent one to a tenant and one to a business.
Two different actions, two different addresses.
Whatever, it's going to be, it's going to be separate. You know, home business is not mixed use, it's not commercial space.
Two different meters.
It's all office.
Right, meters, heating system.
Which we're going to do anyway, right?
Yeah, I think that's the key, that, that's how you could do it.
Yeah, yeah, which I, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and I have not visited the homeowners' documents since they were approved by municipal council, but I, I have to believe that's how they were crafted and written. So we will get to the bottom of that and make certain, because obviously, we've, we've got copies of that, and the town has a, a record copy of that somewhere. But, yeah, so if that's, if that's the only sticking point, I, I don't think that's a sticking point, because I think that's, that's how it was developed and presented.
For the village, for the town center.
With the registry of deeds.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it has to be recorded.
Yeah. Yeah, and as they go, they have to do. Yeah, and as they go, they have to do the, the condominium's, uh, floor plans as well, uh, and an updated site plan. So every time a unit sells, the surveyor has to go through, okay, this unit is substantially complete, and then they can show all the other ones in whatever state of construction they are. That gets recorded prior to the sale of a given unit. Uh, if that happens to be the same person buying the commercial and the residential condo as one, or at the same time, then they can, they'll put that together. I, that's, I corrected myself, Mr. Nap. I got, I got off that.
But remember, the commercial space is the commercial space, I mean.
I understand.
I can't buy that and then use the, another space as residential. You know, that's not the intent of the regulations. It's supposed to be a mixed space, so you can't, even if you buy both, you're not supposed to use the commercial space for residential. You know, that can't be a storage space.
Oh, no, absolutely.
You're gonna stay with the two-bedroom.
We understand that, absolutely. That's why there's no, there's separation. It's not, somebody can't just say, oh, I'm just gonna, you know, put stuff in there.
Right, right, and, and that's the reason that, you know, when Lynn was re-revising the, the layout of this thing, understanding that the, the building was gonna be one-eighty towards, so that the residential-looking side of it was gonna face Route Nine. They maintained that space downstairs does not have access from anywhere else in the residential portion of the building. You've gotta go through that, that ground-level front door in the front to get to it.
And it's supposed to be a commercial space for commercial use.
Correct.
Right.
If we had Rick revisit that, just from the standpoint of fire code, you now have a garage that is under the residential space, which means here, you've gotta have a firewall, you've gotta, yeah, right, it's double.
Double wall, drywall.
Six hour, six hour rating, is that what it is?
Five eights.
Six hour rating, is that what it is?
Yeah, I would anticipate they would submit the amended site plan with the changes, and then that will go before the, now the technical review group, um, where the applicant will be there with all the department heads, um, to discuss, you know, any limitations or issues, and then it comes to the board.
I think the piece that's gonna be challenging on this, and we've, we're gonna have to be very conscious of that, is, is making sure that it was approved under the town center guidelines, and that it remains aligned with that, even though the line has changed two lots over.
I can ask town council if the board wants me to.
Yeah, in other words, that the vesting is valid. That's obviously important to us as well.
Yeah.
Well, it's, ab- above and beyond the vesting being about valid, is that it continues to align with what it was approved with.
Absolutely, yep.
That, that's where it's.
Otherwise, they couldn't do six units, which is essentially a.
So our purpose in coming tonight was just telling you that we just wanna make it look better and be more, um, environmentally friendly. And so I, I was actually excited to say, okay, we can make this better, we can turn this around, make it better, make it more livable for people that are there, um, get rid of a lot of parking and stuff, and just make it look better. So, you know, we're really, like I said, we're not changing.
Well, I mean, I would say that, I'd like to change, but.
Good, thank you.
The, you know, you got thirty thousand square feet allowed, rather than eighty thousand square feet, by making it a mixed use. So that mixed use is, is a hard thing, and it's gotta be maintained.
Yep, absolutely.
So otherwise, you know, you gotta, you gotta benefit, and then you're not gonna, you know, you got what I wanted, and now I'm not gonna do it.
No, of course not, no. That was not my intent, and I'm sorry if it was confusing when I presented it.
So I have a, um, another question on this. This property with the road up to the top was quasi-ADA compliant, now it's not at all.
Excuse me?
ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, like, there is no means for somebody to get to the residence in the upstairs of this space.
Is that.
But the residential.
That's not.
But it's, it's, it's not approved as a residential, this is a mixed-use development.
But the access to the commercial public piece will, will be handicapped. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the reality, if a, if a handicapped individual.
If they want to install a lift, they can install a lift up the.
Well, that, that's what I was gonna say, if the, if the, uh, residential unit, or any of the residential units, gets sold to somebody with disabilities, uh, they will have to build in a ramp to, to supplement the stairs, or maybe the stairs get replaced with a ramp, or as you say, a, a lift, you know, backside of the garage.
Side of the garage.
But in, in the residential, that really doesn't apply.
No. At that point, the door, the door signs are all set.
Right.
Um, previous discussions, there was quite a bit of concern from a butter about headlights and light pollution into their properties. So I don't know if this changes.
Uh, I mean, it's.
Like headlights at night.
Yeah, it, it's gonna result in, in cutting less trees, so I think it would only serve to improve it. And it was the, uh, the butter to the, to the southwest.
You're not gonna cut, right? And it looks like.
This site's already mostly cut, there isn't, but like, when you look at it, and I, like, that's the other thing, when you look at the, the minimum, um, for permitting out at a hundred thousand square feet, it's close. Already, it's close.
Didn't we have a landscaping plan for this?
We did, I think.
Yes.
Right, but just for an AOT, if you look at the total clearing on that lot.
But I think we had a landscape plan for the buffer next to the.
Yes.
We, we concerned, there was concerns about headlights sweep, and the, and the landscaping.
Those were dealt with, yeah.
Right, and then when it went up the middle, I think maybe that was less, but now you'll have more headlights down below.
Well, you have the same.
I don't quite know where that translates.
You, you have the same drive aisle on that south side, that southwesterly side of the buildings. So a- as long as we maintain the, uh, the previously approved landscaping plan, or, or something more, you know, uh, robust even, uh, you'd be taking care of that, yeah, or that would be covered.
Or is better, right?
Yeah. I think the neighbor would say that.
I think so, I think she would.
Any more questions?
No, the, I, the only other item I would like to make sure that is thought about is like, when we look at the drainage that's now flowing through there, like, I don't know if anybody's seen it, there's been a lot of water moving through that area. To the point where at one point, it was overrunning the culvert that was originally set in there. I think they upsized the culvert.
I believe has been upsized, we planted, we've seeded, we've seeded grass, we're waiting for it to grow.
Sir, did, did there still want a measuring plan? Over some stuff? Service up this?
There is.
There is?
Yep.
Now there's less impervious surface, so it will be improved. Yeah, I only got the front, so it's probably. I'm green, oh.
So when you come back, you'll probably show some of the updated greenery you're gonna add and things like.
Oh, of course, yeah. Yeah, I mean, basically, we're gonna take the same plan set that we had and just modify it to a.
Modify.
Yep. Property.
Exactly. I appreciate you hearing us.
Yes, thanks so much for having us, and I, I apologize to be the sole reason you guys actually had to get together tonight. Don't hold it against me.
That's true.
We're only missing one, so, so good.
All right, what else do we have here, other business that may come before the board?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to introduce our new prospective member.
It's got a select board, so.
Did I say select?
No, he has thoughts about this.
Oh, yeah, he's got two meetings, one coming this month and the next one in May. And you should be able to make the second May meeting after being sworn in, so we'll find you seats for you soon, so.
I'm on board, I'm semi-on board, almost on board.
Should we go to non-public to discuss?
Give you fair warning, no good deed goes unpunished.
May have come, most have gone.
Yep.
I just have a quick thing to address for the board, um, going through this process too, I think having the HOA documents, having it beforehand, sounds like this is something that we should be considering.
Yes.
It hasn't been in the past, even though it's a condition of approval, at that point, you guys don't really see it, the attorney just sees it. So, um.
They can write whatever they want in it.
Yeah, so in applications moving forward, just be conscious of asking for that. Um, I can always put a note, my staff note, that they, the board likes to see it, but.
Would everybody like a copy of it?
So.
So we'll just.
Well, I meant, like, new applications coming through too.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
In addition, in addition to.
Right.
So.
Because you're right, we never see him, attorney puts it, and then we just go to the.
They just make sure that the town's interests are.
Yeah.
Until recently, when we started addressing it in other applications, and to make sure that the HOA met and complied with our regulations, because what we're finding is you go back and look, and they're not complying with the regulation. I can pick out three that have done, that do not comply with our regulations, but they're approved as such.
So I was looking through the regulations, we ordered the environmental assessment on the project. I didn't realize we had to go through the components of and specify, because not all of those were done.
Right.
Environmental assessment. And I think the wording is a little confusing, because in the introduction, it says may or shall, and then it says shall on some of them, and.
We should firm that up.
If, if we addressed it as a full and complete environmental assessment, I think that will address the may items, because by saying a full and complete means we're addressing not only the shall, but the may as well.
And some of those assessments take a gross area surrounding site, and that's what they're specifying, and it does not. It's not anything that we're concerned about.
Right.
Slopes, impact on prime wetlands or anything, so that's something we should toughen up on.
Got it.
In the business?
Make a motion.
Second.
Oh my goodness, can you get it out yet?
I thought you were gonna jump on my coattails.
I definitely heard Donna.
Oh my gosh, I know, after I said it's something, I was, oh, Donna, that was your role.
Roll call.
Nap eye.
Got the yellow eye.
Tessie, right. Chris Goli, we're outta here at seven thirteen, not too bad.
Yep.